Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together tonight in this wonderful town, full of wonderful people, to do your business, Lord, the business of the city. Guide us and direct us. Let your Spirit hover over us. Help us to be wise in our decisions and in our comments to each other. Bless our time together and bless this meeting, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, Mayor Milton is joining us via Zoom. Is that correct? There he is. There he is, right there. All right. Yes, sir. I'll be running the meeting, but will also maintain my representation for word one and will be voting on tonight's matters. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Lucas, Houghton, Cooper?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Denham?
Here.
LeBlanc?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
All right, this is the Public Comment Section of the Board of Alderman Meeting. At this time, the Board will hear the citizens who have signed up. In the order they are listed, please note, the Clerk will let speakers know when. They have 30 seconds left and a notification will sound when their time is up. We ask that speakers wrap up their comments upon hearing the 30-second warning. If a speaker would like a board member to bring an item from the Consent Agenda down for additional discussion, please note this request during comments. Please come to the freestanding microphone in front of us to address the Board. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
We do. Our first and only speaker is Gary Gromen, speaking on history.
Hello, Gary.
Before I start, Mr. Chairman, do I not get to address the whole Board, or do they get the option to get up and just walk out because they don't like me or what I'm going to say?
That's...
Your Honor, may I request a recess right now until Alderman Lucas comes back in so we can show respect to any of the citizens that want to talk tonight? We only have one.
So we take a motion for recess?
You can. You don't have to.
Okay, we're going to call a short recess. (laughter) All right, we're back at it, and Public Speaker Gary Gromen is at the mic. Here we go. Oh. I think it's not on.
I think the battery.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. On October 14th, 2025, at the October 24th, 2025 Board Meeting, the Branson Board of Alderman made history when it considered not reappointing an appointee to the TIF Commission. Two Aldermen, Lucas and Schultz, did not like some of the comments I said about their antics while they were conducting the city's business from the deus. When my name was set forth, Schultz made a motion, seconded by Lucas, that Gary Gromen's name be removed from consideration because of alleged problems they had with those comments. To the best of my knowledge, that's a first. At the August 12th, 2025 Meeting, my public comments were made, with me standing at this microphone, speaking directly to them. The comments were regarding city business that the Board had jurisdiction or authority to take action on. Specifically, they regarded comments Schultz made from this deus during an official Board Meeting. The Branson Municipal Code governing the public comment portion of the meeting also allows Alderman to stop, rebut, or correct any innuendos, erroneous accusations, or perverseness at any time during the Speaker's five minutes, and additional time for comments and questions from the Mayor, Board, or City Staff directed to the Speaker for the Speaker's response. Neither Schultz nor Lucas made any comment, point of order, or any other objection during my five-minute comment period. Immediately after my comments, Schultz commented, pointing out the many hours he devotes to city business, that many times behind the scenes, he has corrected hundreds of mistakes, espousing his concept embracing "the pain of discipline over the pain of regret," whatever that means. However, he gave no reason why he didn't handle this obviously petty change the same way he allegedly dealt with the hundreds of other corrections he say he had made. Further, he did not have the honor or decency to mention any innuendos, accusations, name-calling, or allegations of me trying to essentially influence the very perverse way my desired outcome from the Board activity while I was standing right in front of him. Instead, he waited till October 14th, 2025. Of all the two Schultz's allegations at the October 14th, 2025 Meeting, Alderman Schultz's deceitful comment, trying to create the perception that I use my position as the Chairman of the Planning Commission to try to influence the Board on an issue that came from the Planning Commission, is as untrue as it is despicable and lacking of honor. Schultz said, quote, "We saw one of these examples recently coming from the Planning Commission, when this Commissioner appeared before the Alderman and made innuendos, made accusations, called people names on the very issue that came from that Commission. The issue is his behavior in front of the Alderman, trying to essentially influence in a very perverse way his desired outcome from his Board activity," end quote. The very issue he talks about didn't come from the Planning Commission. It arose because of Schultz's pettiness. The video of my presentation that night clearly shows that my comments did not ask the Board to do anything, let alone change an ordinance that had come to them from the Planning Commission for action. My comments were about the pettiness of Schultz's correction, the manner in which it was made, and the potential impact such pettiness could have on employees and appointees. At the time of my public comment, there was nothing for me to influence, perversely or otherwise. The ordinance which Schultz referred to had already been approved for its first reading by the Board without any comment from me, and was scheduled for its second reading as part of the Consent Agenda. Typically, items on the Consent Agenda are passed with a single vote. Simply put, there was nothing to influence. It was a done deal, and at the time of my public comments on the pettiness of Schultz would have become final as part of the Board's approval of the Consent Agenda. In the vast majority of cases, whenever I give an opinion, conclusion, whether in a column, article, or during public comment, I give a basis for that conclusion. One might disagree with the conclusion or the basis, but there is at least some basis to evaluate. Shouldn't a citizen, even me, be entitled to the same consideration, especially in cases like this where Schultz uses office to question my integrity and honor? Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We're good. Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Board or staff would like to have moved down from the Consent Agenda and ask additional questions? There are none. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items on the Consent Agenda?
Your Honor, the items on the Consent Agenda are as follows: Approval of the Board of Alderman Minutes for the October 13th, 2025 Study Session, October 14th, 2025 Special Meeting, and October 14th, 2025 Regular Meeting. Acknowledged receipt of Planning Commission Minutes for the September 2nd, 2025 Regular Meeting. Acknowledged receipt of Advisory Park Board Minutes for the September 16th, 2025 Regular Meeting. Acknowledgement of Disbursements for September 16th, 2025 through October 15th, 2025. Final reading of Bill Number 6599, an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to water and sewer rate adjustments of utility fee schedule. Final reading of Bill Number 6608, an ordinance authorizing the City of Branson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $11,500,000 for an industrial development project, Butterfly Palace Project, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions and connections therewith. Final reading of Bill Number 6611, an ordinance approving participation by the City of Branson, Missouri in a new national opioid settlement with the secondary manufacturers, and authorizing the Mayor to execute the documents related thereto. Final reading of Bill Number 6614, an ordinance amending Section 86-621 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to stop signs. Final reading of Bill Number 6615, an ordinance authorizing the Mayor to execute a cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the public improvement designated as Route 76, Tannehill County, Job Number 7P3507, consisting of replacing the signals on Route 76 at the Main Street intersection in Branson, Missouri. Final reading of Bill Number 6616, an ordinance approving the contract with Seabridge Acquisition LP, aka Optimum, for relocation costs of telecommunication facilities related to West 76 Country Boulevard improvements, Segments 1 and 2, project, and authorizing the Mayor to execute the contract. And final reading of Bill Number 6617, an ordinance appointing members to fill certain vacancies on the City of Branson Tax Increment Financing Commission. Your Honor, that concludes the reading of the Consent Agenda.
All right, do we have a motion approving all the items on the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk will provide a roll call vote.
Lucas, Houghton, Cooper?
Yes.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0. Motion carries. Your Honor, the next item is the Public Hearing and First Reading of Bill Number 6618, an ordinance adopting a budget and a capital program for the City of Branson, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
All right. We will now open this public hearing and begin with a staff report from Allison Ramsey.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. So here, we have before you today the 2026 submitted budget, which was first introduced to you on October 6. So, starting with the timeline, in June, departments entered their 2026 operating budgets and capital projects into Tyler. From there, departments met with HR and Finance to review the full-time employee count for 2026. In August, we had a public hearing establishing the annual levy, which was set at .05845 mils, which remained the same as the 2024 mil rate. Also, in August, we updated the budgets and sent them back to departments for review, and then we had meetings with administration and the departments to review their revised budgets. In September, we adjusted the budgets from the meetings that we had with administration and the departments once again, and then on October 6, we presented that budget to you as the proposed 2026 budget and capital plan. From there, on the 13th, we reviewed alternative rate models from the original rate model that was proposed to you guys. On the 14th, we discussed and amended the original rate model for the utility fund, and then the Finance Committee met last week to discuss and propose the 2026 budget to you guys, and then tonight, we have the first reading of the 2026 budget, with the final read being on November 25. The methodology behind the budget, so with revenue for sales tax revenue, we budgeted a 2% increase over 2025. We're currently seeing that fluctuate, so we were at one point during the year at a 4% increase, but right now, we're at a 3% increase over our 2025 budget. So, to remain conservative, we did a 2% increase in sales tax revenue for the 2026 budget, and then for tourism tax, we did a 4% increase over the 2025 budget, and we're currently seeing about 12% increase in revenue over the 2025, over the 2024 amounts. So, we budgeted a 4% increase over the 2025 budget for 2026. And then, when we get to expenses, for personnel, we budgeted a 1% COLA with a 4% merit. For health insurance, it was a 10% increase that was budgeted, and work comp was a 5% increase. And then, for commodities and contractual services, it was, on average, a 5% increase over 2025's budget. Moving on to the department budget, and starting with Mayor and Board. For 2026, the Mayor and Board budget is $126,530, which is a 12% decrease over last year. When you see a decrease in these funds, we took the three-year average to determine a decrease. If they weren't meeting the budgeted funds that were allocated over the last few years, we went ahead and decreased our budget, so we weren't over-budgeting in funds that didn't need the funds. Moving on to city administration, we budgeted $988,552, which is a 5% increase over the prior year, and this is due to contractual services and a contractual service that we will enter into in 2026 for our comprehensive plan. For city clerk, we have $711,517, and they have started something new this year of Passport Processing Center. That doesn't contribute all to this, because you have seen the increase in personnel expenses that contributes to that increase in their budget for 2026. Moving on to municipal court, they have two people budgeted in this fund for personnel, so not an increase or anything, remained pretty flat at, actually, a decrease of .4% for 2026 at $260,007. Moving on to legal, you'll see an increase here, just with our legal department that we've built up, but then we have backed down some of those contractual services for 2026 to kind of level out this department with the legal budget coming in at $1,404,000. Finance had a decrease in their budget of 6.2%, and their total budget being $1,454,189, and they have 14, we have 14 positions budgeted out of the Finance Department. HR also decreased for 2026, coming in at 6.7% under their 2025 budget, with a total budget of $1,070,380. IT with a budget increase of 5.7% increase over their 2025 budget of $1,436,851. And then, we also see an increase in planning. This is due to the TIF development that's coming in and budgeting all the positions and contractual services that are needed for that development, with that budget being $1,939,711. Fire's total budget was increased of 22%. This is because we have budgeted, we have funded some of a fire training facility for the 2026 budget, with their total budget being $9,331,476, and they have a total budget of 61 positions. Our police fund also increasing 19%. This has contributed personnel services and loggers, and they've increased their position count by two positions, with their total budget Parks budget has decreased over the 2025 budget at 2.4% decrease from 2025, with a total budget of $4,388,706. Public Works's budget has also decreased by negative 1% over the 2025 budget, coming in at $9,835,429. And then, utilities with a 4% budget increase over the prior year and coming in at $19,978,193 over the 2025 budget. And then, that is all for our budget. So, you guys were presented the proposed budget, and now this is the submitted budget, and we've taken into account what you guys had to say on the proposed budget, and then also the Finance Committee. Are there any questions about the submitted budget?
Go ahead, Alderman Schultz.
Yeah, just kind of a, first of all, I just want to say to the staff, thanks for the great deck this year. I thought that was just fantastic. You could sit down, you could study it top to bottom, get most of your questions answered. It was really great to have that, so thank Kathy and the staff. And also, to the Finance Committee for getting together and reviewing it and giving their endorsement to the plan also. I had a couple of questions, but I think you've answered them already. In your opening slide, the deck, if I remember correctly, or if I read it correctly, said that the tax increases, the 2% and 4% planned increases, I think in the deck, it said based on projected 2025. Your slide said based on 2025 budget. Which, which one?
So, projected and actual there for taxes remained the same, because we're coming on target, so we didn't increase that amount for the projected amount. So, that's the same number. Projected and submitted budget for those revenues remained the same. We didn't change that number.
Okay, so the projected numbers that we saw on the deck are really the 2025 budget for revenue?
Yes. And that's because when we do sales tax, like, we might see a huge increase when we're doing this budget originally, because of when those sales tax dollars are coming in.
Yeah.
But when it flattens out the rest of the year, we don't want to over-project for our budgeted numbers, so we keep those flat.
Yeah, I get that. There are a few spots, and I don't know if you want to take these kind of questions now, then, where I'd like to look at specific tax numbers, because I couldn't find the 2% or 4% in some of those numbers, and I didn't, I wasn't sure if they're blended tax rates, you know, if there's things besides one thing in there, so that may suppress the number a bit, but when it's appropriate, I'll have those questions for you.
Anyone else on the Board? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment, speak? Nope. All right. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6618. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. Any members on the Board?
I guess this is a time, Allison, where I'll ask, if you don't mind.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Never mind.
Let me give you one of my examples, and then you can talk me through it, because I'm sure I'm just not seeing everything. When I look at the public safety funds, pages 92 and 94, and I see a less than 1% planned tax increase in those, the public safety funds are a sales tax, and the deck says we're going to charge 2%, so what am I missing there? Or we're going to increase it by 2%?
So, it's all lumped together with other taxes, and then this also has to do with TIF funds going out of that fund, so then you're seeing the net value of all those transactions hitting that fund.
I imagine, then, we'd see that in all the fund categories, potentially that effect, where, like, I looked at, or I'm sorry, tourism, same thing there. You'd expect to see 4% on the fund income, fund taxes, but it's far less than 4%.
Yeah, it's a little bit different, because we're lumping things together. So, in general fund, you also have franchise taxes in that tax number, and then you have property tax revenue, and you're not projecting those at an increase based on what the mil came in at, and based on franchise tax increases, because we don't want to budget a huge franchise tax increase, because we haven't seen that increase. We can project an increase for things like electric and gas, but then, when it comes to cable franchise tax, that kind of offsets that revenue increase that you would expect. So, those are all lumped in in taxes in the general fund, and then, when you get to tourism, you have a bunch of other revenue sources with transfers in, taxes, miscellaneous revenue, and you keep, we keep miscellaneous revenue flat, because that's unknown. We don't know what that will be next year, and we keep it flat, or we actually decrease that value, because sometimes miscellaneous revenue includes grants that we might receive in the next fiscal year. So, you can't take the total revenue amount and then project that at a 4% increase, because there's different things lumped into that. And I can break out that detail and get it to you, Glenn, if you want me to, so you can see each of those revenue lines and what's projected for next year.
Yeah, I guess I'm not asking for anything special there. I was just curious why I couldn't get the numbers to add up, and I think that explains it. I do want, one other area that I just, I hadn't heard much explanation on, maybe I missed it during the presentations of the joint meeting, the convention center. It appears that the revenue's decreasing in the convention center, the fund's going down. What's happening there?
So, that's what we're projecting on our budget for next year, and that's just based on the 2% increase over what they currently have on their proposed stuff, and that also has to do with miscellaneous income and what they're getting in miscellaneous income from different sources that we can't project into the 2026 budget from the 2025 budget. They had some miscellaneous revenue budgeted in 2025 that did not carry forward to 2026. Um, they had some miscellaneous revenue budgeted in 2025 that did not carry forward to 2026.
I, I saw that, but are, so essentially are we looking at a loss in the convention center compared to this year that we're in? Or is it just the lack of forecasting that leaves us with a budget that looks like we're losing?
So it's a lack of forecast right now, just based on those miscellaneous incomes. Everything that we can predict um, for their revenues, they are predicted at an increase. But then when it comes to those miscellaneous lines that we cannot predict, that's why it's showing a decrease for next year. And therefore then you also see a decrease in some of their expenses that you can cut. So some of their contractual services that aren't there. And we will have them bring their budget back in the first quarter um, to review year end numbers for '25 and also re-project 2026 based on when, what those numbers came, come in at. Um, because when we do those numbers, right, we don't have everything, we don't have all their revenue um, projected. So we're doing it at a point in time based on their proposed numbers. Um, so we'll bring that back in quarter one and we'll revise their budget if we need to.
And then one more if I can. Um, the controlled substance tax, that one was left flat from what I could see. Is, can you talk to that?
Yeah, so this revenue is super unpredicted right now. We don't know what it's coming in at, um, so we don't want to project an increase, right? Um, that's revenue that's kind of unallocated and can be spent on whatever. And then we allocate that to the police department, um, and the fire department to use. So we kept that flat for next year because we're not really seeing an increase or a decrease based on those revenues. And it's not been long enough to take a three-year projection on those revenues to be able to um, set an increase for those funds.
Dang. Oh yeah. Get after it.
I don't want to monopolize it.
Glenn, go ahead.
You know, we've seen a lot in the news in the last several months about the consumer rate of inflation at 2.9%. It looks like it's going to come in at, it bounces around a few per- tenths of a percent, but let's say 2.9%. Um, and our sales tax is up far more than that. Our tourism tax is up more than that. Um, and yet we're planning a 1% cost of living increase. Can you just kind of talk to the strategy of that? Why we came up with 1%? And is the effect that we're gradually losing on our employees' salaries? I know we have merit in there too, but here comes the expert.
Yeah, I'll have Haley explain um, our ideology behind those.
Um, so really, we put more of that increase amount that's allowable for each employee based off their performance. So our goal is truly to increase that pay for those top performers, right? So we have a 1% COLA for, up to a 4% merit with the intent of most people hitting around a 3% on average. Um, and again, to really provide more options for that top performer so that they can kind of get, you know, paid for their performance a little more. So.
Yeah.
That's truly why.
I want to add one more thing. Thank you both, for both of you. Um, the other thing too is not that long ago, just within the last couple of years, we did the wage study. We've adjusted, if, if you guys remember, we adjusted the wage brackets in the, the different classes. And so we feel really confident we're, we're, we're much closer to market and like communities type rates in as many areas as we can be. So we feel like we've done a good job of that and Haley's team is always watching that and comparing, you know, um, job descriptions with, again, both the private sector and other public sector entities. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Do I have a comment?
Oh yeah, mayor, go ahead.
Boy, how impressive it is, Allison, that um, the level of presentation that you have provided um, the finance committee and this board and the amount of detail. And the questions Glenn asked were very good questions. And to, for your um, responses, Allison, just off the top of your head, men are knowledge and how much you must thoroughly understand what these numbers, um, how they, what they make up. Uh, I am very impressed. I just want to share with the board that we are extremely fortunate to have you on our team. So thank you.
Yeah. Ma- mayor, I just leaned over to Kathy and she said that you stole my thunder. I was about to comment on that. I mean, she's so young and so smart. She just spits that out. I'm like, I'm still trying to memorize the words to Oki from Muskogee from 1980. She's just spitting out stuff. All right, anybody else? No? Anyone in the audience want to brag on Allison or have any comments? No? All right, thanks, Allison. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, same sign?
The result of vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6619 and ordinance approving the second addendum to the agreement with the Southern Missouri Professional Firefighters Local Number 152 affiliated with the International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO-CLC for changes in monetary provisions only and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Chief, you better be as sharp as what we just witnessed.
Oh my gosh. So mayor members of the board, can I just go?
Good luck, pal.
Yeah.
Hang on, just, we get it on the floor really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Do I, uh, what are we doing? Oh, we've heard the first reading of bill number 6619. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Now be smart.
Thank you. Can't answer that, sorry. City staff, including the fire chief, human resources director, and city legal counsel met with representative from the International Association of Firefighters Local 152 in August and September of 2025 in cooperation to reopen contract negotiations for monetary provisions as allowed by the 2527 collective bargaining agreement. The negotiations provided for the development of a second addendum to this agreement for wage rates only. The addendum provides for the annual 4.14% pay increase based on a successful performance evaluation, a 1% COLA provided for all city employees, and an additional 1.8% increase for firefighters, engineers, and captains only. This 6.84% increase will have a financial impact of an estimated $170,000 and is sustainable, according to Allison, in the FY '26 budget. Staff is also requesting a double read on this as we move forward into next year.
Awesome. Anyone? Glenn, you don't have any questions, do you? I'm just kidding. Do you have, anybody have any questions with the chief? Anyone in the audience? No? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Result of vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Your honor, I move to read bill number 6619 for its final reading due to timing.
Got a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any members of the board? Anyone in the audience? All right. Uh, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Right, madam clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your honor, this is the final reading of bill number 6619 and ordinance approving the second addendum to the agreement with the Southern Missouri Professional Firefighters Local Number 152 affiliated with the International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO-CLC for changes in monetary provisions only and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
All right, you've heard the final reading of bill number 6619. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. One last chance, any board members? Anyone in the audience? All right, madam clerk, will you provide a roll call vote?
Lucas. Lucas? Houghton?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your honor, the next item is a resolution approving a special event permit application for the Veterans Day Parade.
All right, do you have a motion adopting this res- oh, do you have a motion adopting this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second and now staff report from Amanda.
Hello, good evening. This is going to be um, pretty painless for you, same thing every year. 93rd Veterans Day Parade, uh, this is on behalf of the Branson Veterans of America, Chapter 913. It is a Level 3 special event. The parade is on Tuesday, November 11th. The setup will be at 7:00 AM and the event will start at 11:00 AM and the breakdown will be at 2:00 PM. They have approximately 5,000 guests and participants attending. This section of our code is in 9465. Here's a vicinity map and the same route that they typically take um, for this parade. We will have temporary closures within the downtown area on South Sycamore Street, Price Street, East Long Street, Branson Landing Boulevard, Commercial Street, and East College Street. With that, staff recommends approval.
Any more, any members of the board have a comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your honor, the next item is a resolution approving a special event permit application for the Branson's Adoration Day Parade.
Do I have a motion approving this resolution?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Amanda.
All right, uh, we have, the applicant is the Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce. This is also a Level 3 special event. Uh, the parade is on Sunday, December 7th. Setup time is at 2:00 PM. The event start time is at 5:00 PM. Breakdown is at 9:00 PM. Approximately 4,000 guests and participants attending. Vicinity map and the parade route. Same streets will be um, temporarily closed during this parade. South Sycamore Street, Price Street, East Long Street, Branson Landing Boulevard, Commercial Street, and East College Street. With that, staff recommends approval.
All right, any men, any board members wishing to speak? Anyone in the audience? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6620 and ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with Missouri Department of Public Safety for the award of the 2026 Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program, MBSGP, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6620. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second. And you ever notice how chief, he loves to enter in a dramatic way? Everybody else just walks down, he's, the door open and stretched down. Go ahead, chief. You've got our attention.
Your honor, members of the board, thank you. Um, well, for all the money you've been spending on the police department uh, the last couple of years, this is paying off a little bit for us. Uh, we were not only approved as a Blue Shield community, but we were funded $50,000 as a result. Um, so this is just like all the other grants we do through the state of Missouri. It is a subaward agreement uh, that allows us to accept $50,000 from the state. Um, we, as I mentioned earlier, we're using this towards our uh, laptop computers for each officer in person in the field. So we do recommend approval of this.
That's awesome. Uh, any board members? Questions, comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Your honor, I move to read bill number 6620 for its final reading due to timing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any members of the board wishing to comment? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Madam clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your honor, this is the final reading of bill number 6620 and ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety for the award of the 2026 Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program, MBSGP, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the final reading of bill number 6620. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Any members of the board, a last chance? Anyone in the audience? Madam clerk, will you provide a roll call vote?
Lucas? Houghton?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries. Your honor, this is the first reading of bill number 6621 and ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with Branson Public School District for participation in the comprehensive process with the alcohol and drug abuse prevention team, adapt and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of bill number 6621. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second, back to chief.
Uh, your honor, members of the board, uh, this is an annual uh, uh, MOU with us and ADAP. Uh, basically the school uh, has received grant money to help us fund uh, uh, prevention efforts with uh, youth and young adults for alcohol, drugs, nicotine, and so forth. Um, so what this does for us, basically commits us to working with them. We attend their meetings and also uh, staff officers at the drug takeback events that they organize uh, in conjunction with the DEA, that's twice a year. And what we get in return is that they pay our overtime for our officers to go out and do the alcohol enforcement operations and so forth. So uh, it's very beneficial for us. Uh, not only does it help educate and prevent for the youth, um, but it also helps us uh, make sure that we're holding the adult uh, sales places accountable as well.
That's awesome. Anyone on the board? Want to speak? Anyone in the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Your honor, I move to read bill number 6621 for its final reading. Due to, as Maltilis would say, timing.
Got to do that hand like that too. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any members of the board wishing to speak? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Madam clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your honor, this is the final reading of bill number 6621 and ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with Branson Public School District for participation in the comprehensive process with the alcohol and drug abuse prevention team, adapt and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the final reading of bill 6621. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
Second.
Motion in a second. Uh, any members of the board? Anyone in the audience? Madam clerk, will you please provide a roll call vote?
Lucas? Houghton?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Denham?
Yes.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
The result of the vote is 6-0, motion carries.
Thank you, chief. Are we at reports? It's over? Okay. Alderman Lucas, do you have any reports for this evening?
I had a few things I wanted to say.
Do it.
Uh, in regards to the parades that we talked about tonight, you know, those, that Veterans Parade being the oldest in the country is something that we are very proud of as a community. And uh, the fact that we are so supportive of our veterans is such a, um, dear thing to me, being 100% disabled vet. And so I want to thank the city for continuing to support that and the Adoration Parade. Being a pastor, that means something to me as well. And so uh, those are two great things that I think sometimes we, we take too lightly. And if you visit to a lot of the veterans that come into town during that Veterans Week and go up to the ball fields and, and spend time with them and, and hear their stories, um, you'll think about that parade differently. And so I, I just appreciate what we're doing there. The other thing, the, the chief's already left, but I was going to say with respect to uh, that, that grant that you've got, you know, that just shows the quality of a, a police force that we have and the dedication that they put in every day. Thank you, chief, for you and your men. And that flows right into the next thing I wanted to talk about, which was the raise that we just gave to our firemen. We saw one time this year, a very good example of how every day these firemen go out and put their lives on the line when we had that explosion. And very nearly lost a couple of guys. And so, and I've already talked with Kathy about that. She knows my feelings. And um, I know we're told that we can't really give them any more. But these guys are one thing that keeps our city running well. And uh, we don't really hear about every fire call that they're going out to. And every time they go out there, they don't know what they're going to face, you know, when they go out for a domestic violence situation or they go out for a, uh, drug overdose situation that the fire department goes to. These guys are worth every penny we pay them and more. And so I just want...
Wonder which alderman told him?
What are you talking about?
Yeah, he didn't know his mark was on.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So I just wanted to say that we should continually be proud of our fire department, our police department, and I'm not trying to put down any other staff, Mayor. We have a great staff. We have an awesome staff here in City Hall, and they all do a wonderful job. And I appreciate Kathy, and I appreciate Alex, and Solan, and even Hillary. But no, we've got a great staff, and so I'm just behind them all, and I'd have given them a 20% raise, but I'm only one vote. So, thank you, guys.
Alderman Houghton?
You good?
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, totally agree. The vet, I always look forward to this week. It's a huge week, and we have, just want to mention, we're having our big veteran show November 10th at our theater, as we do every year, sold out. We feed them lunch and put on a show, morning show for them with our 50 show and the evening show, and then my wife, Tina, is producing a vet show at the Legends on the 5th, so there's a lot of different vets events going on, a few folks want to get out. And then on November 8th, I'm going to be doing my radio show live from the mess hall at the Red Roof, and we'll be interviewing a lot of the vets and talking with them, so it's going to be a fun week coming up. We're always excited about Vets Week, so that'll be cool. Alderman Denham?
A huge thank you to Cindy Shook and her staff. At the Park Board meeting, so many exciting things always get discussed, but I just really wanted to highlight the exciting opportunities with the trail system, and also the training that goes along with the bike trails that our kids are going to be able to take advantage of, too, you know, to train them correctly so that they ride safely. I think that's great. And then also, the community center made a presentation, and I think it'd be a great idea, maybe, if we can get her in sometime to present. There's a lot of stuff that takes place at the community center, and, you know, sometimes we just aren't all aware of what's taking place, so I think that would be a good idea. And I want to say a thank you to Michael and his staff during the shady, shady drive road work that was taking place. I got a call from one of the property owners in that area, so I just, you know, automatically call engineering, and your staff was amazing getting out there. I think you went out there, too, and were able to just go out on site and take care of a concern that the neighbors had, so thank you for your fast response to that. I got a text back, and the gentleman was, he goes, "I just don't believe how they responded and how we work so well together, so thank you for what you do."
Alderman LeBlanc? Yeah, as with all of our departments, always toting the line, but Cindy Shook, got a kudos out to Parks and Rec, you know, in your absence. Josh did an amazing fill-in job. He really did. You know, what a knowledgeable, pleasant fellow to kind of hang out with and do things with. So, but welcome back. Much appreciated. Glad you came back. I, too, you know, the 93rd Annual Veterans Day Parade. Wow, 93 years. Like, that's, what a legacy we, you know, this community's created long before we were, most of us were even thought of, you know? Kind of interesting, the Adoration Parade to follow. Those are all great events, and, you know, it's almost like, can we just approve them to eternity? You know, like, why do we always have to come back? But it's the ordinance, and we want to abide by those things. Like to remind everybody, this weekend is the Christmas tree lighting, down by the Christmas tree by the Ferris wheel, and then also, this is our, we will only have one board meeting next month, so we won't have a board meeting November 11th because of Veterans Day. Like to remind everybody about that. And again, Parks and Recs came through, my youngest grandbaby, one-year-old party happened there, and it was pleasant, uneventful. The space was amazing, the help there was just attentive and just right on point, so thank you so much for all of that. But, you know, I hear the good job they're doing, but when you experience that, it just kind of takes it to a whole other level. So your staff, Cindy, is doing a bang-up job, even in your absence, so thank you.
Alderman Schultz, welcome back, live in person.
Yeah, it's good to be back. If you didn't hear, I was out in Nebraska, like I always do this time of year, helping family with harvest out there. Got it all in, so that's all done, and glad to be back. It's a lot of hard work, a lot of fun with family, but good to be back. I don't have a lot. I did walk downtown today, since I got back last night, and talked to a couple of merchants. Nice comments about the new post lamps and the LED lamps in the street. Are those going to be lit soon, Michael? What's the story on that? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to... Soon?